One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn your mics on.
Yeah, don't touch it.
Let's start with the roll call, please.
Mayor Pealan?
Present.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Ranville?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Bryan?
Here.
Also present, City Engineer Shane Nelson, City Attorney Bob Rupe, and Anoka County Sheriff's Department Commander Wayne Heath.
Thank you. We do have agendas that we have printed up here, and they may be amended, so all can follow as necessary. Any needed actions by the council to be addressed. We can amend this agenda by proper motion for discussion items. Business from the floor is welcome and allowed to point our agenda, so if you want to speak at the open mic, please sign up in the back. If you make comments, we ask you to be recognized first by me. State your name and address for our records, and then you have three minutes to state your comments or concerns. We do have copies of the agenda in the back table, and all the items that we'll be discussing here tonight have copies in the back table. If you do have cell phones with you, please silence them. And that's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ranville.
If there are no amendments to the agenda, I move it as printed.
I would just say that when we get to the consent agenda, Item C, I would like to have a brief discussion on Item C. Just a clarification there.
Right.
But other than that, there's no other amendments, and I will second that. So a motion to second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries. Commander Heath.
Good evening and good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year, and Sheriff's Board actually extends his New Year's greetings to the council and to the staff as well. Just a couple of things for this report. I wanted to, I let the mayor know, but in March, the city council meeting, we'd like to meet the deputy man. So on March 10th, I was trying to arrange to have some of our deputies that patrol the area come to the city council meeting. And we've done it in the past, and it's been a nice thing for the council to get to meet some of our staff, and also for the deputies to see the council and see some of the things in the city here as well. So just wanted to let everybody know that I asked Lori to get us on the agenda for that. Just to wrap up 2019, I spoke briefly with the mayor before the meeting started, and I'm sure you all saw when the calls for service numbers came out, there was a significant increase. As we discussed, I've been working even up until the other day trying to rectify why some of those outliers do exist. I did talk to the council a while back about some of the unknown calls for service that were being added that weren't truly a call for service. I checked again and been assured that that's been remedied for 2020, so those won't be showing up in the calls for service. And my hope is that that stabilizes some of those numbers as we did see an increase in 2019 from our 2018 numbers. And also spoke with the mayor, and I'll be trying to make sure if I see some outliers in significant calls for service or when we see rises in specific types of crimes, to let you guys know as a council what I am seeing, if there's a correlation to those things or not, just to maybe put your mind at ease. Make sure, we are watching, we always watch, I look at all the calls. Just so you guys know, I get a list of reports daily from the sheriff's office, everything that happens in now, then, every day, and I review it to make sure, to see if there is anything that we can correlate and kind of point to. What could we do differently here, is there something else we need to address, or take some other approach to? But I will keep, I'll keep the council more informed about those things throughout the coming years. We move forward, so you guys kind of know what I'm seeing or what I'm not seeing, other than just looking at it on paper, because I know sometimes that can be difficult, to get a true sense of what's happening just when you're seeing an outbreak of 261.
Especially when they're big numbers.
Yes, and I completely understand, when I saw them, I had to do a double take. And again, I apologize on behalf of the office for the clerical issues. Unfortunately, I can only report to you the information we get out of a computer system. As I spoke to Councilmember Greenberg, I don't have the ability to program these computer systems. I'm reliant on the data I can get from others. But I think we've got to nail it in and hopeful that, hopeful that that is the case, and I'll let the council know if it isn't. So just to sum up, for December, calls for service numbers were 157, and that brought our total up to 1,982 for the year of 2019. But again, some of those were unknown calls for service and weren't really a generated police or fire call in the city. It was a way that our communications was trying to capture phone calls and requests that they were giving that weren't necessarily being dispatched to law enforcement or a fighter.
Commander, we talked about this last month, but just to reiterate, as we look at future contracts, we know calls for service is part of that equation. For those that were added, and I'm looking at July, that was probably, looks like it's 100 more than we would normally have. Can we ask that there be some consideration for that as we look at the formula for future contracts?
Yes, absolutely, and I hope what you're probably following today, as a matter of fact, about this, just to make sure that, he asked me to confirm that everything was going the way it was supposed to be, and we talked specifically about that, understanding that we're going to have to look at those numbers. And if there's other areas where we can point to different calls for service that there was an increase, we can use those, but we wouldn't use that category as an increase, to increase the total calls for service. So, yes, that's our opinion. And I guess I just wanted to point out, you know, I try to find out some calls of interest to the council, and this one kind of struck me, it's been a long time since I worked the road as a parole deputy, but I read through this call, and I thought it was just something that the council should know, just as some of the things that do happen in law enforcement, and it happens in every city, but it just happened to happen, occur here this night. Our deputies responded to Northwood Bar and Grill on the report of a fight there. It was on last Saturday evening at about 7:00. And the folks had separated prior to our deputies' arrival. They gave a description of one of the suspects, and one of our deputies found that it was a female walking, and he bound her and detained her. While they investigated, so she was asked to have a seat in the squad car while they investigated, and the deputies were inside the bar. Ultimately, what happened is this patron, the suspect, had picked a fight with another patron and assaulted her. And then her friends were able to get her to go outside to try to resolve the issue, and outside, she turned on her group of friends and assaulted one of them. And obviously, there's a significant amount of alcohol involved in this. As the deputies were investigating this, she had been pounding on the squad car windows, and the deputies were explaining, we need time to resolve this and figure out what we have to do. During that time, while they were doing it, she ripped, inside of our squad cars, we have an interior camera that monitors what's going on in the backseat. She tore that out of the backseat of the squad car, and also intentionally urinated in the backseat of the squad car. I don't bring it up to make light of it, but I like the council to know sometimes that the things that our staff end up dealing with. And what some of these people are doing to the public, obviously, this person caused some issues. There's other people attending this event or at this place of business and not causing any problems that one person can go in and cause significant problems. But it was nice, we got help from the public that reported it and helped us get it to a resolution. The suspect was also, was ultimately jailed for the damage to property and the assaults. So, just something I point out, that these are things that happen, and sometimes when people do things into excess, it causes those problems.
Or chance, a now then resident?
It actually wasn't a now then resident, so, which is nice to see as well.
And do you have the plastic backseats like some of the squads?
We do.
For that very reason?
Yes. And it, but I read in the deputies' report, it still took him over an hour to clean out the back of his truck. So even with the plastic seats and everything else. So, unfortunate, but the nice thing is, you know, I was glad to read the reports, and by all accounts, the deputies acted professionally even in the face of that, and still were able to bring a good resolution to it, so.
We appreciate it, and I'm sure the patrons at the facility appreciate it too.
And it's been my experience that the overwhelming majority of people, like when they're at an establishment like that, are just trying to have a good time. And when you have somebody like that that comes in and completely turns to tide, they've always been very helpful to law enforcement and help us out, because they just want to enjoy themselves and whatnot.
You know, I would say that, because this is the first time you've brought that up, I mean, it was a unique case, but, you know, in the two establishments we have in town, I don't think I've heard this occurring ever. But, you know, I'm sure it's happened some, but it's not common.
Yeah, and we have very few properties here, so I think that's commendable. That's a, that should be, that's good for the establishments. They're obviously doing a good job of trying to help make sure that people don't get overserved. And sometimes people come to establishments and have already been served too much alcohol. So yeah, we don't, not that I've seen, have any issue that is ongoing at the establishments.
Yeah, we appreciate it, it's been nice and quiet, and both of them have well run, so.
So that's all I had. There was a lot of activity this month, but luckily, nothing of any significant consequence, so.
And, nothing big up north here?
No. No, actually, the numbers were down at Farinami for the month, we were down at one call, so.
All right, anything from the council? For the commander. All right, we appreciate that, and look forward to meeting the deputies.
Yes, it'll be fun, it's always a nice evening.
And if the sheriff can join us, we'd love to have him there too.
Yes, I'm trying to make that one work in the schedule, it'd be one of the first on the list, so, see if I can get on the calendar.
Been a while since he's been up here, tell him we miss him.
I will, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commander. Lori, any floor items?
Nothing.
All right. We'll go on to the consent agenda, and before we approve that, I would like to address Item C. This fall, we had talked about addressing meeting schedules, looking at having committee meetings as necessary, rather than scheduled every month, whether, if there's something there or not. And so we talked about a few things, and we're going to have a workshop, which we haven't had yet. So from the Item C, I would like to maintain the commission committees as they are, with the current members and chair people, until we have that workshop that we had planned, and we'll get that scheduled here, with the one change that we do have a resignation on the PMZ. So we'll accept the resignation as part of the consent agenda. If we could pass the consent agenda, except for the committees and commission appointments and keep those status quo, I would move the consent agenda with that consideration.
I second that.
Motion to second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
Explain that one more time.
So, the, in the packet, we have all the appointments for the year.
Yep.
And what I'm saying is, we'll keep the commissions and committees as they are, save for the one resignation. So keep them as they are with the chair people, till we have a workshop and talk about how we want to handle those meetings going forward. For our discussion last fall. And we don't know the exact date of that workshop, we're still confirming that. All right, any other discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, engineering. We have a surface water management plan, we have a resolution for that. The only we don't have in the resolution is a cost. Is that appropriate at this point, do we know potential cost for that management?
Mr. Mayor, this, the surface water management plan is really similar to like a photo ordinances or a guidance document, it sets forth various standards of the city. It's what, it's the first step that helps us guide how we manage water resources within developmental projects. So the costs are really borne by the developer of a project or by the city, in the case of Robert Construction, or maybe even a county in the case of Robert Construction. There will be some minor administrative costs or implementing, after this surface water management plan is adopted, we recommend that we read through our ordinances, just if there's any ordinances that we think are out of date or should be updated, advise the city council of that, as well as our standard specifications. Just to give the council a little bit of background or information around this, State Stand 203B requires that watersheds prepare a watershed management plan at least once every 10 years. The Upper Rum River, WO, just recently completed and adopted their watershed plan in mid-2019 or so. And then we have two years to update our plan, to bring our plan up to importance. Also tied with that is the comprehensive plan that's on a 10-year schedule. And in order, the comprehensive plan, or the stormwater management plan, even though it's a separate plan, it's required to be submitted with our comprehensive plan. So there's really two factors that are required that this local surface water management plan be updated, and we really, it's mandated by state law.
So it's mandated, and you drafted it, and it was approved by the watershed in October. Is this still, need to be part, submitted as part of the comp plan, or?
It has been submitted as part of the comp.
So have they commented on it, are we still waiting to hear back from the met council as part of that? We're still waiting for met council on our comp plan. Do you know if this is any part of what we're waiting on, or?
It is not.
Okay. All right. So we have a resolution. We obtain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-01, adopting the surface water management plan, the third generation.
Motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
A motion to second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
At the Upper Rum TAC meeting last week, last week, this week, last week, we did talk about the minimum standards that the watershed has to pass or have in their comp plan. And we're looking at refining those even further. So those have been given to Lori, so that we can just make sure that our ordinances are in compliance. And the watershed stance is that these are minimalist, as far as standards go. And so many of the other cities were saying there should not, usually isn't an issue. Most cities are already above and beyond the minimum standards from the watershed, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we got a bunch of feasibility studies. Shane, what do you want to say about these?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think if we could just take them one by one. The first project is Willow Creek, which we've discussed several times in the past, consisting of Ebony Street, Ebony and Garnett Street. The feasibility report, or the scope of work included in the feasibility report, includes reclaiming a substantial portion of Ebony and Garnett, and then constructing a two-minute overlay on just a small segment on Ebony Street, kind of where, from where the large patch had been done, south of the Y, down to 185th Avenue. So the scope of the improvements does not include any subgrade repairs or anything like that. A lot of that work has been done in the past under separate projects. In talking to Joe, most of those are holding up well, and there might be one isolated area that he thinks needs to be repaired. The estimated cost for those improvements is $296,000. If the city applies a 50% city portion, that leaves $148,000 to be funded by the city. There are 20 units that would receive benefit from this project, which would result in an assessment of $7,400 per unit. In talking with Lori, the city has adequate funds to cover the construction, or cover the project costs for this project, as well as the other two project areas, and so the estimate does not include any financing or bonding cost.
We've had some discussion over bond rates being what they are, and dropping twice since we bonded last year, and some other considerations that we may need money for this year. So we are considering, or it's going to be under discussion, to, we may want to bond this year, have that money for another situation that's come up. Okay. So I asked Lori to at least calculate what difference that would be. So we do have hearings, we can give people realistic numbers, or as accurate numbers as we can. But it, right now, talking with our financial advisors, rates are historically low, and look like they'll be that way for a little bit. And we don't know what next year is going to bring after the election, so it's being considered at this point.
Okay.
And that would leave us cash for whatever our decision is on the fire departments. So that is something we'll want to factor in here before we firm everything up.
Okay.
Once council makes that decision.
Sure. And this, keep in mind, this is a preliminary estimate, and I don't know, Attorney Rupe can chime in if he feels different, but, you know, normally, we try to, we try to account for, you know, all the soft costs that are going to be involved. So if there's financing, sometimes it's, you know, it's a cost $30,000, $40,000 to prepare the bond sale. And we try to account for that in the estimate. But these, you know, again, these are preliminary, and this is not the final assessment hearing. So the numbers could change between now and the assessment.
And so, obviously, it's winter time, it's pretty hard to evaluate some of those. The one patch we did north of the Y, it's been 10 years?
It dug out again last year.
Huh?
It was dug out again last year. The original one?
The original one we did back when this first came up.
There's been several transitions and changes.
I know we've done either side of it, but I just want to make sure that whatever we would be leaving would be, have the same integrity as what we're doing new. And how do we determine that? I mean, right now, Joe said there may be one additional. I just want to make sure, with all the excitement we've had over this road over the past 20 years, I want to be as accurate as we possibly can. So when we sit down with residents, we have the most consistent numbers and plan going forward.
I definitely
Sorry to say, because Joe's saying maybe there's another one that needs some base work, but.
Right, and I definitely understand the point there. It's relatively, or it's pretty difficult at this point. You know, we did soil borings on these roads, but that was 10 or 12 years ago, and we've done a lot of repairs since then. So those soil borings aren't necessarily that useful anymore. We can do soil borings again, and take a look at, you know, take a look at some of the areas that have been repaired and that haven't been repaired. And there are certain things, properties of the soils, that can tell us the condition of the subgrade. So whether or not that soil is saturated, whether or not that soil is relatively stiff or relatively soft. And they do that by dropping a weighted hammer and recording how many drops that hammer takes to drop one foot. And so there are a lot of tests that we can do to determine that, and that, I think that is recommended. But typically, that is done after the feasibility report is approved and during preparation of plans and specs. So if you decided to take that step tonight, our next step would be to engage a geotechnical engineer and have them do that additional geotechnical work.
Is that, can that be done in the winter time?
It can. It's, you know, there's definitely frost in the ground, and some of those measurements aren't quite as useful, or, you know, you have to be taking with a grain of salt during the winter time as opposed to the summertime.
And what does that process, even if we delay it a little bit till we have, I want to do it at the best time so it's most effective, what's that, something like that typically cost?
Soil borings and a report for a single project area usually run between $6,000 and $10,000, maybe for the borings in the report. When you add in additional soil borings, really, you're only paying for the additional cost of the soil boring. So if we were to do testing in all three of the project areas, my estimate is that all three of them could be tested for $12,000 to $15,000, so.
Hi, go ahead, Councilmember Ranville.
Mr. Mayor, Shane, so when you said all three areas, you're talking all three areas in Ebony and Garnett, or the three locations that we're discussing?
The three separate project locations.
Project, okay.
You know, I think, again, that the soil borings would be valuable. And again, with the history of Ebony and Garnett, I would like to be as thorough as we can. I would like this to be the last time in my lifetime we're I would like this to be the last time in, in my lifetime we do this. And I'm planning on living for a while yet, so. So, and, and I, I think that it's, it's incumbent on us to do a good job. So I, I would recommend that we do it and have the, take it, take the cost out of the monies we put aside in our road budget, separate from the cost to these projects, if that's reasonable.
Okay, true.
So that we, we have it done. I just want to make sure it's done right. I don't want to add burden to the projects either. This already is really high, so we want the road done. There's not many here, so go ahead.
Do you want my address name to add? Well, and what I would like to, obviously, just for the council to is, I think, you know, briefly talking to Shane before the meeting is, I believe we may be jumping the gun on the feasibility study just because I know Joe tore up a section on North of Y on, on Ebony just last year. So we don't know exactly what's going to happen there and that's not the first time we've done that. And I know there's another section north of, Michaelson 10871, that's had boiled up in the spring. So I'd rather see it, you know, looked at further.
So the, the one on Ebony, we intentionally did that? Because that, we, we went around last year and we looked at these projects that were on schedule for this year. And so we intentionally fixed those. So Joe went in and fixed that, but we left it open with the idea that if we get a successful feasibility study and we decide to move ahead with this project, rather than pave it over and then repave it.
No, and I understand that aspect, but there's no guarantee with what, what we've done is going to fix the issue.
Right.
And that's why.
And that was my concern there, that I was assuming what Joe was up just north on Garnett, it was the other one that had boiled. And that's, that's what I'm saying, that I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves and say we really do need more subgrade work than we budgeted for.
Yeah, because you look at this scope of this project, for what the assessment values for each homeowner, that's more than what we paid for Old Viking. And one thing the council should also consider, I know just over the last few years, we went to the 50-50 split. But most of the residents in that development have been, are permanent residents when it was first established. And if those residents are assessed, it will be the third time in over 20 years that they've been assessed for road improvement projects.
And just clarification, it's not more than we paid for Old Viking, it's more than individually homeowners paid, yes.
Per household.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's a big number.
But again, how, how are many other residents within now that can say that they've been assessed once for road improvements compared to a few times?
Well, since we've been a city?
No, well.
Since we've been a city, everybody.
It's the time I've lived here, but you can even go back 20 years. So say use 20 years now. How many residents of Burns Township included have been assessed for road improvements? Now you're asking 20 residents to be assessed for a third time. It's a hard pill as well.
I, I understand, that's, that's why we're moving cautiously. But the first thing is we had to figure out what real costs were. And I want to make sure that we actually know that, rather than come back and say, yeah, 74 is really high, but it's going to be higher.
Well, and I believe it will, because I don't think doing the.
Well, and, and part of though, you know, the repairs we did last year in preparation for this, we absorbed those with funds we put aside for road improvement. So, and I'm not going to speak for the council, but I would recommend that we do the same thing. If, if we find the boils north of you on, on Garnett need to be repaired like we did last year, if the Ebony one holds up this spring and that one needs to be done, I would assume the council would approach it like we did last year, where we take that out of our other fund and not assess that to the residents. If there's anything else we can do to control some of these costs, we certainly will investigate that. We're, we're at the beginning phase here, and so I think there's, there's unanswered questions. And I don't know when we can figure those out until the frost goes out on some of those. But we also know that we made it by the skin of our teeth last year to get contractors on what we did. And, and they all learned their lesson last year. And they're going to be, I'm sure, pretty aggressive this year, so. We're giving it our best estimate, but it may come in even higher as well if we have to make a decision at that time. There's still a lot of unknowns. Most of us on the council are, are sensitive to the history of this road, so.
Anybody wants your thoughts or your opinion?
I'm sorry, Shane, go, go ahead.
You know, I just, I guess I'll just conclude on this particular roadway by just, I guess, confirming in that I, I believe there is more risk on this project area as well as some of these other project areas than say on last year's road projects. Last year's road projects were relatively straightforward. We were dealing with roads that were either had a, a solid subgrade and just required a, an overlay or it was just a matter of, you know, old pavement. So it was just a pavement had failed, but we weren't seeing a lot of, of subgrade failures. In these project areas, we are seeing subgrade failures or we, we've seen those in the past. And so there is more risk. Sometimes you don't see those or see the full extent of them until you start the excavation, which.
So if we did, we did the soil, soil borings on all of the projects, would that reveal some of that?
It's definitely recommended because it gives us a much better idea. However, we're still only doing a test at say one every 500-foot interval. And we can find things that are unexpected in between those two soil borings that are 500 feet away.
So, you know, let, let's take, you know, I'll go off this project yet, but these three all have had failures in the subgrade. And, and we know the approximate area because we repaired them last year. Is there a way of tightening up our distances on the soil borings so that we can take a look where we had failures to know?
Sure, we.
The potential, identify the potential more clearly?
We can do more frequent soil borings. But there, there, there's still, can be instances. I mean, we can take them at 100-foot intervals and we can still find something in between those two soil borings at 100 feet away, or it's in one of the roadway lanes and not the other. We've seen a, a lot of things. You know, sometimes things just aren't, aren't discovered until they're uncovered, simply because we can't see under the ground. So the more we take, the more it helps us understand what's under the road and, and does help to reduce some of the risk. But it doesn't, it certainly doesn't take the risk away. Now, there is a.
So the reduction of the risk, it's a cost benefit analysis. We'd have to see if we do it more frequently, what's the cost and, and what do we think the risk identification is? Understanding that we open up the road, there can be surprises. And I would recommend the council put a contingency fund in there, separate from the assessed amount, to say this is contingency for surprises.
That would be, that would be a, a good idea. You know, there's, there's also a couple of different techniques we can take when we bid these projects out. You know, we can, we can design something, call for, say, a lot more aggregate base, a lot thicker pavement section. And so it, we can, you know, it can be bid out that has a very low likelihood of needing extra work, but that's going to cost us, you know, that, that scenario would cost the city more money, whether it needed it or not. We try to be.
And that would be harder to, to separate from the assessed portion.
And it would, right.
So I'd prefer not to do that. I'd rather put a contingency.
Right.
And reserve with the city. And if we run into it, then we pay for that and don't surprise.
Right.
Residents any more than we have to. I mean, again, it's up to the council, your recommendations. All right. So I would expect 20 homes to be represented at a, a hearing on this one. Anything else you need to say on this one?
Nothing else on this one, no.
No, we, we definitely need to check that area further up in Garnett and then we'll have to see, you know, Joe's patch from last year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian. I know even October of 2017, there we put, when we put together a list of roads to get done, this based on, the Ebony and Garnett was listed as, you know, there had been extensive patching, but there still was that one spot. There may be additional one, one more area that requires patching and subgrade. And I don't know specifically if that was the one that we repaired last year or that, that, is that, I don't, you probably don't know three years ago if that's the same one or it's a different one.
Yeah, I, I know, I think Maintenance Supervisor Joe Glaze would be the best source of that information.
Well, we. That we've done is the worst ones. And the one that's newer from Garnett, that we was talking about, I believe the subgrade is fine. Just the asphalt is drunk. You know, the whole thing is only a inch thick. They just painted it and made it black. It didn't do it. The board was up there to check it, and I think the subgrade is fine.
It did boil up there.
We, we haven't done anything with that one yet, though.
Right, yeah, so, you know, yes, this is a difficult project because I don't want to spend the money if, if we're not sure what's underneath and having to go back in again to fix another spot, so.
No, I, I think we need to get the base taken care of before we consider it done, so. All right, well, we know that, that north on Garnett, that thin asphalt and boil needs to be checked. And we need to check the patch we did last year on Ebony. And then we need to discuss whether we're going to do more frequent borings and testing so that we can be as assured as possible we get a good base. So we'll, we'll need to understand what those costs are and then see where our additional funds are that we put aside for road improvements, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray Mill.
I'm wondering if we could ask staff to look into the history of the assessments on those roads. Is, so, so there would have been two assessments, when they were, what they were, what the cost was?
You already know.
I could say it all the time.
He knows already.
Hi, Mr. K.
Well, we originally assessed 185th and Jasper was, but I don't know if that was specifically the county itself or Burns Township. That was the first assessment back in 93. And you can't assess again until that one's off. So then that was, was 2003-ish when we did another patch, we were assessed. There's a value, I believe it was not to exceed $25,000 total. I think it actually was a little, a little bit more than that.
Was that all 20 homes?
That was all 20 homes.
So that was more than $1,000? Do you remember what the original assessment was when the county came in?
I could, I could go back and look. Because that was one of the comments I had made to Shane years ago when, you know, we, back when they were talking about who or what properties to assess, because obviously we're not, that development's not on 185th or Jasper, but we still got to assess a certain percentage of that whole project. And I do, you know, because we've talked about.
Was, was Ebony and Garnett Black Topten part of that or was already, was Black Topten was developed? But you were assessed.
It was Black Top in that same timeframe. So I think what was, and this is speculation, I think what happened was the developer worked out a deal with whomever was paving 185th and Jasper and paved that, it ended up at the same time.
And, and the homeowners were assessed a portion of 185th because you had to get out that way?
185th and Jasper, the whole project.
Yeah, Lori, if you'd be able to look into that and see what the actual numbers are and dates.
And that all happened.
It's hard to believe that 185th was gravelled before that.
It was, because I know just east of Morewell, where that was a pretty bad spot, low and soft and.
And shaded.
And shaded.
It never dried out. No, I remember, it's just hard after all these years to picture it again, so. All right, anything else on this one, Shane?
Nothing else on that.
We'll go on to Krypton, 183rd and Merle's Lane.
So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this project area is another project, specifically Krypton Street, that we discussed approximately one year ago. We had looked at just doing a reclaim and some subgrade or some patching repairs on Krypton Street. However, when we considered this project, we, we thought it really made a lot of sense to also consider doing some improvements in the form of an overlay on 183rd Avenue and Merle's Lane at the same time. There's, Krypton Street is kind of the only way in and the only way out. All the, the residents that live on 183rd or Merle's Lane or Petroleum Street have to use Krypton Street to, to get in, in and out of their, their house. And so this project area was revised to include a reclaim and pave of Krypton Street and then an overlay of 183rd, Merle's Lane and Petroleum. The total estimated cost for this project is $243,600. With 50% city participation, that'd be a city cost of $121,800. There are 29 units that would benefit from these, this project, which results in a assessment of $4,203 a unit.
You know, one of the things that, looking through the document here, it doesn't call out Petroleum on any of this. It calls out Krypton, 183rd and Merle's Lane. So it is, it would be an overlay on Petroleum as well?
It would be.
And there, two residents on Petroleum? So they're in your numbers? Even though Petroleum isn't called out here?
You look at the map, properties 14.
The map doesn't show the orange, because the name Petroleum is so long, it doesn't show up as orange, but.
Oh, sure. Yeah, 14 and 15 kind of come on on the corner, I suppose. At that point, it, it probably could switch to Petroleum.
But 14 and 15 are obviously part of the count.
That's correct.
But we'd be coming all the way down to the end of Petroleum there as part of the overlay?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
And this is another one where we didn't fix, that was all the subgrade that needed to be fixed was what we did last year. So that's, that drive.
Providing when Joe looks at it this year, it all held up like he expected. All right. Anything else on that?
Nothing else on that one.
And then 189th, 190th and Dolomite. This is another pretty old road.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, this, this is an old road. I don't see the same subgrade problems that we've monitored on the other two project areas. With the exception of on 189th, kind of on the east side of Petroleum, there's that, that wetland there. That looks like it's, it could be a little bit softer, maybe had some subgrade items. And then talking with local residents, possibly on Petroleum, there might be an isolated.
Saying Dolomite, you mean?
No.
I'm sorry, Dolomite.
Yeah, there, there was a spot on 190th that we, we patched this last year, 190th, the middle of Dolomite. Don't think we did anything. I don't think we did anything on 189th, did we, Joe? So, there was a problem on the east end of 190th and in the middle of Dolomite that we patched this summer. So, we did two patch jobs there, again, left them open. Did you, you left those open too, didn't you? So, there's a couple of repairs we did there, so. Yeah, there's a lot of wet around there. So, with Dolomite and, and up on 190th.
Right. Again, this project would involve reclaiming the existing bituminous into the aggregate base and then paving a new three and a half inch layer of bituminous with some shouldering. One thing I, I did notice when driving through this project area, it's a little bit steeper in slopes. And this project would not do anything to remedy those in slopes. So, there are techniques, you know, you basically haul and fill and add to the shoulder. That usually involves moving driveway culverts and extending roadway culverts. So, that is something that could be considered. But for this project, it was just considered a pavement rehabilitation project and not a reconstruction project of doing the additional sloping.
Do you know how extensive that additional sloping is?
Well, if we were to correct all the slopes per se, our four to one standard in slope, I mean, my ballpark estimate is it would add about another 50% of the project cost. It'd be pretty substantial. You know, we'd be looking at wetland permitting, culverts, a lot more seeding and restoration areas, a lot more self fence. Now, that's something that we hear from the residents or, you know, from a majority of the council. Something that we should consider. We can definitely revise our, our preliminary estimate to include that. But this other project area that was originally kind of discussed one year ago, and at that time, you know, these projects were looked at of trying to replace as much of the failed bituminous within the city as we can and not necessarily doing full reconstruction.
What would be the impact if we didn't? The, the slopes?
The impact if we didn't? It would just remain largely like it is today. You're just, just the process of reclaiming and paving without, without importing any additional aggregate base. Because we reclaim the additional aggregate base, that's not as compact as it, as a compacted bituminous is. So, a lot of times we see that fluff, that material fluff up just a little bit, maybe a half an inch to an inch. And then if we construct a new three and a half inch bituminous mat on top of that, we would estimate that the new road surface will be about four to five inches higher than existing. So, not a big change from what's out there.
Yeah, so on that project, we're saying that one and a half to four inches on the Ebony and Garnet, we're saying one and a half to six inches above the height, above the road. I'm sorry. Yeah, four inches on that one, one and a half to four on the Krypton.
Correct. And one and a half would be the overlay portion. The four would be the reclaim and pave portion.
There again, that number's creeping up there. 50% more on 6100 would not be-
No.
All right, anything else on that one?
Nothing else.
All right, we have resolutions on all three of those. Resolution 2023-4 and -5, except for feasibility studies as presented, which we then schedule a public hearing for the 13th of February. And Linda, you will be in California.
What day is that?
Thursday. Mary, you will be in Florida.
That is the current plan, but-
Yeah.
Based on some issues that might not occur. I could be here all winter.
And the date of day earlier, that's Wednesday, so that doesn't work. You're not here anyway, so.
I'm not back till the next week. I'll be back Friday, but, but really.
How'd you pick that date? A month out?
I think I came up with that date, didn't I? Was that due to you?
Uh, yeah, I believe you had several options and, and attorney, Rupi and I-
It was trying to accommodate our schedules, you know, given our other clients and other meetings we already have scheduled. The, you do not need to have a, you need a quorum to hold the improvement hearing. So, three out of the five need to be here for the improvement hearing. But you cannot, you need at least four out of the five to vote for ordering the improvement, to move it to the next level. And so, if you have the improvement hearing and only three of you can be here, that's acceptable. But I would advise you at that point in time to put the, whether you're going to order the improvement to your next city council meeting when you have, have a, at least four out of the five there. And you have under the statute, six months after you hold the improvement hearing, to order the improvement. And Shane would already be working on plans and specs. So, it would not delay the projects in any way or getting bids out to try and get, you know, advantageous bidding.
Yeah, I think we'll have real representation in these communities, so. That hearing will be interesting, so. All right, so right now, we'll, we'll continue with the 13th of February as the planned hearing date. And we've got them on half an hour apart. All right, any other comments on these? Half an hour going to be enough?
Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, it's, it all depends on how many residents attend and how long each resident is given to, to speak if they have comments. In some cases, we hold them a half hour apart and Bob and I had-
We're, we're, we're the only people that show up. There's been times when we've held improvement hearings and we wondered, did we give notice because nobody, nobody came? One person came to one of them about five minutes late and she had the notice, so luckily we knew we had sent it.
Right.
But she said the only reason she came is because she had a question about a drainage issue. You know, so, again, I can't tell you, you know, how, if people have a lot to say, then people will come. But typically, for a lot of these, a half hour typically would be enough. That doesn't mean if you do have it and you notice the hearing for a half hour later and there's some, some people that want to finish up, we just keep people, and we've done it before, where people will sit in the audience and then wait for that hearing to be done and then we immediately call the next hearing. You have the right, though, if you'd like to, you know, instead of a half hour, 45 minutes, it's just, you can't start the next hearing until the time we've noticed.
So, two of the projects have 29 residences and 29 properties and one has 20. We're starting out with one has 20, but they're the most experienced at coming to these hearings. I wanted to reverse the order.
And put them at the end?
That would work.
That would work. Then you'd give them as much time as they need.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
So, so Willow would be at-
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yep.
And then-
Would, would you expect a large turnout from the Krypton Street, 183rd? That project area, would that be a smaller turnout? If you think that's a smaller turnout, that could be at first-
I think, I would do the Krypton first. I know people on Krypton will be more excited, but the dollar amount, people have, the other one's less excited. I think the 189th, 90th, the dollar amount will get a good turnout there.
So, start at 6:30 and we could even start the last one at 7:15 just to give that second one 45 minutes.
Yep.
Krypton at 6, 189th, 190th, Dolomite, 6:30. And Willow Creek at 7:15.
Is that Krypton was going to take longer?
No. I think 189th and 190th will take longer.
Okay.
Krypton, we've, we've heard some feedback from people on Krypton, but not the other-
February 13th.
Overlays, so. If one's going to go less time, I think Krypton will be there. All right, so with, with that, we can pass resolutions with those amendments accordingly? That make sense, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, good. I will accept a motion on Resolution 2020-03, accepting feasibility study for the Willow Creek area and calling for a hearing.
Don't move.
With the amendments as noted here, so.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Singing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2020-4, accepting feasibility study and ordering hearing for improvements on Krypton, 183rd and Merle's Lane and Petroleum.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, again, with the amendments as noted. Motion is second, any other discussion? Singing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2020-05, accepting feasibility study. Preparing plans, specifications, calling for hearing on improvements 189th, 190th Lane and Dolomite Street.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, we have motion is second. Any other discussion? Singing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. I just think, we had talked earlier on the Krypton, 183rd and Merle's Lane, and we had Petroleum. Do we need to include that in or are they just covered because they're, they're actually-
We should include Petroleum in this, since it's-
Just in the verbiage.
In the verbiage, it's, it's not in the report, but we are including it, so.
Sure.
That section of Petroleum. All right, well, let's take excitement again. But I, I think if you, if you consider that we want to be more thorough and, and help us understand what those costs would be, we do have money set aside on a road improvement separate from these projects. But I would like to make sure that we're doing as thorough a job as we can here in preparing for it and then getting the base upgrade taken care of before we put anything on top of it.
Okay, I will have a salute of quotes from geotechnical firms and present those at your next meeting for-
And if we have any concerns on the, the drainage on 190th and Dolomite near those wetlands, speak before we get going.
Sure, yeah, I think it's just a matter of, you know, if we, if we reconstruct the surface, you know, it's just, those slopes are going to be unchanged for the next 15 or 20 years. And if we can live with that, in my opinion, it's a fine project. If we, you know, suppose a, if we had a surplus of, of money available for these, this kind of use, at that point, I think we could consider doing some slope corrections. But I would stay the course, or my recommendation would be to stay the course and use as much of money as we can to fix our pavement issues in the city.
So, you're thinking that could be 150 to 200,000 to affect the slopes?
Correct. Yeah, it would be, it had a, a pretty substantial amount of earthwork if, in order to flatten out the slopes. It's not just a matter of hauling and fill, but it's also moving the ditch over. When you move the ditch over, now we have to move the driveway culverts. When we move driveway culverts, we have to cut the driveways back further. It just adds in a lot of additional cost to, to correct those slopes. And when we get to reconstructing the ditches, at that point, we'd consider it a, a reconstruction project instead of a reclaim and pave. So, it's kind of moving up to that next tier of, of projects.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ringo.
And to Shane, I mean, th- those slopes have been there forever. And they're not causing trouble as they are there now, so.
Yeah, they're just a little bit steeper than what we build now. I mean, that's what it really amounts to, so.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, the other thing is, you, if you are going to look at bonding and, and the city clerk is going to look at those potential costs, if you could ask the city clerk to communicate those to the town engineer so that when he does his PowerPoint presentation for the improvement hearing, we have accurate numbers. So, that may be something that, that it'd be better to give people the numbers that are higher. And then if you, people are always nice to get a nice surprise later, but you, you probably want to go with a more conservative number, what the estimate for cost might be.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up. Before we started printing up color points and copies for residents, I'd rather have worst case scenario so that it only could get better from there.
Right, and we could let people know that at the improvement hearing, that these numbers are, are estimates based on sort of a worst case scenario. But it's something that you probably, you don't want to give people a lower number and then at the assessment have a much higher number.
You don't.
Mr. Mayor, is that something you'll be discussing later on your agenda tonight or?
Well, we didn't, we didn't, you know, we had talked about it. We don't have it actually on the agenda. I was hoping to talk about it as part of this, but we haven't finalized with Lori yet what, what that would look like, so. We have a consultant we work with and who's currently out of town, so.
Sure.
It is something we brought up in December, so I think it's, we need to talk to Lori and aggressively pursue this. And if we have to call a special council meeting to confirm it, we'll do that and get those information to you.
Okay.
But, but the advisors we have in, in, from a couple of different areas saying this is, you may not see these numbers again. And it's a good year to bond. I think Forest Lake just did a road project at 1.1, 1.2 interest.
Oh, wow.
And, so they're coming in and they had 11 bidders, so.
Okay, yeah, I guess one other thing for the council to consider, I mean, if, if part of the reason for the, the bonding is to help fund some other unexpected expenses, would the co- would the, the issuance cost for that bond be added as a cost for, for these road projects? Or would that be absorbed somewhere else?
That's what we would, we would take a look at. And one of, one of the things is the money that we have could be invested. And potentially the interest right now, we would know what that interest would be, could cover the issuance cost.
Sure.
That's what we're, we're trying to figure out from a financial standpoint, you know, where our cash flow is for the year. What do we have, what potentially do we have with the fire department? And then if we invest it, if we can lock money up for a 12-month period and get a known interest out of that, could that go against the issuance cost and not add to the project?
Okay.
So, that's what we're trying to figure out at this point.
You just shoot me a note and I can either include it in, as a cost in my presentation or, or not, either way, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the council items, we have a memo from the clerk regarding cost of living increases. We have a memo here with requests and a comparables to neighboring cities and cities similar in population. I would make a motion that, understanding that this cost of living would be for all employees, full-time and part-time, that we go with the recommendation of our clerk at a 3% increase. Understanding that those costs are in the budget, would be around just under $12,000 increase to the city, and we have that budgeted. So I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the clerk for 2020 cost relating increases.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion is second. We're open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Lori, will this be an annual 3% or just in 2020?
This is just 2020.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I would like to see the part-timers removed from this. They are, those positions are incidental. They're, you know, they're not full-time. And I believe that we increased the wages of those employees last year. And I, you know, so I would like to see that the part-timers not, you know, the snowplow drivers, part-time, temporary administrative staff, part-time, temporary maintenance staff not be included in the COLA increase. I also would like to see a lowering of the 3%. I understand that staff hasn't had a COLA in many, many, many years. But in, people that have contacted me, they are not comfortable with the 3%. They're not receiving 3% in their COLAs where they work, if they get a COLA. And I know that in my social security, in my pension, it was 1.6 and 1%.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Knowing that we have, you know, made adjustments to salaries last year, you know, I think it's something that staff can't, that we can look at year in and year out and see what fits. Some years it may make sense, some years it might not. We did have a, you know, an actual wage study where we evaluated and made adjustments last year. I personally would like to think that, or think that we, this is, we need to, would be part of reviewing the administrative guide and policies, and that would be some place to include in that. But I think we're, we know, we budgeted for it, we had it in there, we talked about it in the meetings and so that we can, I would think for part-timers, we need to evaluate that when we're, when we're looking at the applicants to see what wage, what does need to be paid to get the right people in place. And I think it would be up to Lori to include that. Hey, what amount do we, or do we not, what amount needs to be included in there in order to get the appropriate part-time staff?
Mr. Mayor, as I understand it...
Councilmember Lake.
There hasn't been any increases...
Cost of living.
COLA, cost of living increases for eight years, right?
That's not necessarily...
Okay, so I'm saying, what I'm just saying to Councilman, Councilwoman Raino, we did keep getting cost of living raises, even if it was 1% for the last eight years. You see what I'm saying? So we were getting cost of living raises, even, I have a pension too, and it's very, it's like 1. something. But I've been getting it every year. They haven't gotten anything for eight years. So I can see this, and next year maybe we reevaluate it if we feel this is too much. But I think for this year, maybe that's appropriate.
And I will say that one of the clarifications is, is there have been some wage increases. There was a study done last year, and the reason there weren't cost of living last year was because in the study that was presented to us by the interim administrator, his evaluation was even without cost of living, the wages are commensurate with people that have cost of living.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That was, that was the understanding for not getting cost of living last year. Because they're saying that based on that, with the adjustments that were made to some individuals, not. That being said, not everybody on staff got a raise last year.
Okay.
So this is, this is one of those where, based on what we've received from the previous administration, that person was recommending those numbers. We're just saying since then, we're looking at an opportunity here to say in the 2020, do we want to consider this? There, I think, I think it clouds the issue by going back a number of years because there were different scenarios that got us to those places.
Okay, okay, and I don't know all that.
But I think we're trying to put a pattern in place saying we want to evaluate this. And, and again, it's something that we didn't quite understand when we budgeted, what that meant. You know, so when we have this discussion in our budget cycle this year, we'll be clear on what does it mean to have a cost of living increase and what do we base that on? But basing that on this right now, we have some comparables from neighboring cities and cities of similar size, that's a recommendation as before us.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you, are you finished?
Well, I'm still, help me a little bit. Is this the raise for the year? I mean, you're not, you're not saying there's a raise and then there's a cost of living raise.
This is the cost of living. And then Lori will be evaluating and telling us if she believes there are additional merit raises that she would recommend, that's separate from this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Merit raises are separate from cost of living raises.
All right, okay.
So that, that's the discussion yet to be had.
Okay, I see.
This is just cost of living.
Okay.
Councilmember Raino.
Mr. Mayor, when we talked our budget, we put placeholders in, in all categories. Having a dollar amount in the budget does not obligate us to spend that money. An example, if we put in $75,000 to buy a piece of equipment, but we find that our existing equipment is gonna last us another two years, we don't just go spend the 75. So we still have the authority to say yes or no, even though there's a placeholder in the budget. The other thing with the COLA and the comment of it's been eight years, well, our part-timers have not been with us for eight years.
Oh.
We have, our full-timers have, well, two of our full-timers have been with us for eight years. The other two full-timers have not. So my justification for removing those part-timers is history isn't relevant to them because they haven't been here that time period. Those positions, salary structure can be looked at. One of them was increased last year. The maintenance staff was increased, the administrative staff was increased in merit raises, wages, wage increases. But as far as the COLA, the part-time staff were not here during those years. And, and again, those part-time staff, it's incidental work or incidental positions. I don't feel it's, in my view, it's not appropriate that they be included in this. And again, the 3% is, is hard for me based on what I see and what I've heard from my residents.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I was looking at the social security site and they say a 1.6, as Mary stated, is this year's COLA. How we could do that and just make it for full-time staff?
Well, Mr. Mayor, what possibility of 3% for the full-time and not necessarily for part-time?
It's, it's, it's a request from staff and it's up to council to make that decision.
Well, I would part-time then...
If you look on the request, the Consumer Price Index, and Lori, I'm gonna guess this is for last year, 2019?
Yes.
At 2.8. So we've got a social security of 1.6, we've got a Consumer Price Index of 2.8. If you want to go in between those two, I don't necessarily want to go down as low as social security.
No. No one does.
You know, I mean, there are years we argued to get it up to social security. So a compromise would be full-time staff. And you could go 2.5, you could go 2, I mean, it's up to the council. Go 3. And you could say full-time staff or all staff.
How many part-time staff, Mr. Mayor, sorry?
We have currently, we have two part-time plow drivers, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori. And we have a part-time administrative help in the office. So currently, we have two full-time in the office and two full-time in maintenance. And we're looking at hiring up to 32 hours a week in maintenance, which will, again, be kind of part-time. And that, that really is replacing what Steve was doing, he was up to 32 hours, correct? To the point being that the part-timers can have salaries adjusted when we hire them to reflect what this would do. I mean, that's, that's again within Lori's recommendations. If she hires somebody, she's gonna look at what's competitive for this type of work and say, they need to come in at this. And that can reflect what this would be anyway.
So I still could get it.
Yeah. And, and I know that we've had some discussion with the part-time administrative help. When she first came on, we were very aggressive in bringing her on at a lower rate. And we want to talk about having a discussion on changing that anyway. So whether it's a 3% for that person or an increase in that person's base rate, I think it's imperative that we look at that and listen to Lori's recommendations on that.
Yes.
Is it going to dramatically impact the part-time plow drivers? Probably not. Does it, you know, does it send a message? That's a different thing, so. But I think if we're competitive in our, in our pricing on part-time people that are seasonal, this wouldn't be as critical. I do think it's critical that we give our full-time employees cost of living.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
So what does the council prefer that be?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I would ask you as mayor and Councilmember Blake, make second on the motion that we change it to just the full-time employees and go 2%.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should stick with the 3% and just full-time employees, but...
Other council? I got a 2, I got a 3.
Mr. Mayor, I thought 2.5 was fair.
You know, we're finally a divided council.
However, however, I work in the private sector, I don't get a thing called a COLA. I get a performance raise. Someone sets out goals for me, and then when I achieve said goals, I get a very prescribed increase in my pay. And this is what I'm used to. I'm not used to looking at this. So I went back and looked at mine. Mine is about 1.6, just almost on the nose with the Social Security Administration. So my bosses are very astute at what the wages are being earned out there in the private sector and how to compensate me to keep me and not lose me. So that's why I thought the 1.6 was right on the nose. But private sector, what do I know about public stuff, right? So 2.5?
Councilmember Bryan.
Break the tie.
I was in the same boat with you, where you're not used to, if you're, if you're working for, if you're not working in government, you're, you're not used to that COLA, so. And it hasn't been 3, 3.5 or whatever, so. If we want to meet the middle, we could go with 2.5 and just do the, do the full-time. 2.5 full-time employees.
Councilmember Lake.
I'm gonna go with whatever the majority says, rules. Right?
Oh, we've got two 3s, two 2.5s and a 2, so that would be majority, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, didn't you say that the other cities are for 3?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
2, 2.5, 2.75, 2, 3, 3, 3, 3, so that's...
Majority are 3. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Comparable by population, we have three 3s and a 2. Neighboring cities are 3, 4 3s, a 2, a 2.5 and 2 and 3/4.
Mr. Mayor, I think something should be said about neighboring cities. Of course, the size maybe. What's a, what's a neighboring city that's at our size?
Princeton, Columbus.
Princeton?
Grant.
Columbus?
That's the second column.
And Grant, okay, well, there are, see, there are 3s.
So we have anybody else for a 3? We have a motion on the table, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, and the motion includes 3 for all employees. So let's vote on that one, and I've got a feeling how that one's gonna go, so let's vote on that one. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
For all employees, 3.
Now, so, so if, if this fails, then you go back to another discussion, whatever the number of which employees.
So we're, we're not dividing the...
This one is all employees.
Okay.
So if you don't want all employees, then you have to vote accordingly. So again, all those in favor of 3% for all employees? Now, we had two ayes. And I need to hear from the other 3.
3% for all employees. Aye.
Okay. So?
You can give us the option to say against?
Yes. So all, all those in favor, all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, this is reviewed again next year, right?
Yes.
And so now you're, let me get this straight. You're still gonna talk to some employees and give them raises besides this 3%? Is this possible?
That is possible, yes.
Okay.
All right, memo regarding the clerk's conference. We've got memo in our packet. There's an additional email that came out this afternoon stating basically the total cost for the conference for both Lori and Ellen would be $1,410. So I move that we approve the cost to have Lori and Ellen attend the conference, understanding that the city would be staffed by our part-time office worker. understanding that the city would be staffed by our part-time office worker, hours to be determined.
Yep, she's able to cover the entire week.
Okay, full-time or?
Yes.
Okay, so the office will be open during this time. She knows how to contact the appropriate people as necessary, and Lori will be available for contact while she's at the conference. So I move that we approve the $1,410 plus tax for the conference cost.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
You said there was a letter this afternoon, or was there an email this afternoon with that dollar amount? Or was it part of the last packet you sent out?
This was the city council packet.
The last packet that came out?
The last packet that came out, yes.
Fourth one that came out.
And it says, please see below, questions from Mayor Peeland with answers in red. So, do you have that one?
I don't.
Should be part of the last packet, and it has the conference brochure with it.
No, I do not have it.
The last thing I received was Mary's, your conversation with her.
This was sent at 2:37, and it should have, it's got four people on it. It's mayor and council members. And it came out at 2:37 this afternoon.
Maybe I didn't see it.
I don't have anything.
Okay, well, what it is, I asked for a total cost. And so, the breakdown is total cost of the conference is 275 per person, recommending Ellen and Lori both attend, grand total of 550, four nights hotel, $104 plus tax, 416 plus tax per person. Mileage, 51 miles, they would be riding together, mileage being 2779, for a grand total of $1,410 plus room tax.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So I did my figuring, and mileage is actually double, because it's a round trip.
Oh, that's correct. I only, I scheduled it just to go there. That's correct.
So an extra $28.
I'm comfortable with our city clerk going and would, I'm inclined to just authorize Lori to attend so that she can enhance her skill set by attending. She can bring information back for Ellen. But I'm comfortable with authorizing Lori to attend. Just Lori.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Lori something?
Councilmember Blake, you may.
What, why do you feel that Ellen needs to vote?
Mayor and councilmembers, I believe that enhancing all employees' skills is always a benefit. There's a lot of things that our deputy clerk is dealing with, that I'm not dealing with during the day, and the classes that are offered at this conference are beneficial to both. She may get something out of it that I didn't get out of it, we share our knowledge that way.
Would you be taking different sessions typically?
More than likely, we would sign up for different things that would make sense to our position. There's finance classes that I would take that she wouldn't be taking. So there is that opportunity to attend different sessions.
Is it common for both the deputy clerk to usually attend?
It depends on the city.
Okay.
It really does.
We did send Ellen to this conference last year.
Oh, okay.
And she did learn, she did bring back some of those things, so. Councilmember Rainville.
And when Ellen attended, she was the only one in the office.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor? I amend the motion to include the extra mileage. So the 1,440 plus tax. All right, so all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. All right. We have a recommendation to accept Randy's resignation as a part-time maintenance worker. I move we accept his resignation as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would just say that the farmer's market folks are really gonna miss Randy. He really did a good, great job, they really liked him, the residents that dealt with him really appreciated him being there.
Good.
So we're gonna miss him.
We'll miss him in the office, too.
Yeah, I agree, he did a good job, and were he to come back to health, he would love to come back and apply again at Point, but he's gotta get his health where it needs to be.
Okay.
That being said, okay, so, did we vote on that motion?
No.
Okay, so all those in favor of accepting his resignation as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have a recommendation for a position description to hire a part-time maintenance worker up to 32 hours at a wage to be determined. With Randy's absence, you know, we were covering our responsibility to keep the recycling center open once a month. Is that something that would be covered to this new position, or you're gonna have to staff that with current?
Yes, that's what this position will cover that as well.
Okay. So we have a recommendation to approve the position description as presented and authorize Lori to accept applications. Do we know what wage you're looking at at this point?
Mayor and council, I would recommend going with what we were paying Randy, which was, going to say it, $17.
All right. So, I'll accept the motion to approve the position description and authorize Lori to recruit to this. And then, city technically, Bob has to approve that person she recruits.
Unless you delegate that authority, but I imagine the council probably want to hear Lori's recommendation and make a final decision on that.
So, I make motion accordingly.
Second.
Motion to second, other discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
So just to clarify, so we're filling the position at $17 an hour?
Correct. Should she be able to find a reasonable candidate at that? If she can't find a candidate, then we'll come back to us and discuss. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the League of Minnesota City's Elected Officials, Elected Leaders Institute Advanced Program, since everybody's advanced now. I seem to go back for the beginners again, that can be done, too, I've done that before, so. There's two opportunities, January 24th and 25th, on Friday afternoon and Saturday morning, same place as last year in Plymouth, or Baxter Arrowood Lodge at Rainard. On February 28th and 29th. So we would need to know who was interested in attending that, and that information would need to be presented to Lori so that we can register. I would like to attend. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I have to confirm my schedule.
Okay.
But I was thinking one or the other.
So you would like to attend, you haven't determined which site?
Right.
Anybody else?
I'll check my schedule. I don't have it here.
All right, if your schedule allows, are you interested in attending, having seen the information?
Will it be any different than last time?
Yeah, this is for the elect, this is, you entered the beginners last time.
I could really go back to the beginners, maybe.
You could go back to the newly elected if you wanted. It's the same cost, I believe, do you know?
I don't know the cost of that one.
No, I would go on to this advanced one if I go. I'm thinking about that, yes.
All right. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to attend, I just, at this point, can't commit. But if I am able to attend, I'll let Lori know, and if there's a late fee involved, because my commitment is my issue, I would pay any late fee.
Okay, Councilmember Rainville.
Looks like this is the February 28th, 29th in Baxter?
This is actually January 24th and 25th in Plymouth.
Yeah.
Same place as last year.
What day of the week did you say that is?
Friday and Thursday.
Friday afternoon and...
Friday afternoon?
Yeah, the experience, the advanced program, the newly elected started in the morning.
Yeah.
But the advance starts in the afternoon. I think it's 1 o'clock or something like that.
Think I'm gonna remain mama.
So up to 4, you will be notified.
Will that be hotel accommodations as well?
No.
No, just drive home.
No, just there and back. All right, we have, see background information. All right. So you have a memo in front of you from me, and you have a couple of letters attached, and you have a spreadsheet. On December 16th, the City of Nowland received a letter notifying us the City of Ramsey intended to terminate the current joint powers agreement between the City of Ramsey and City of Nowland. We had a fireboard meeting, we had told them that we would not be able to go $160,000 plus for one year, to keep the arrangement going. We had already upped our contribution from our $6,400 requirement to $8,048. Ramsey came back requesting that for the year 2020, Nowland pay $82,215. We had originally agreed to pay $8,048 to the City of Ramsey for 2020, so it's a significant increase still. What I am proposing, that we go back and say, we'll stick to the $8,000, but we're not, we have not budgeted $82,000. And if we're going to be off on our own, I think we need that money for our own department or our own future plans, whatever they be. What I am proposing, at our fireboard meeting, we meet next Tuesday, again in Ramsey, that in addition to our agreement to pay the $8,000 that we'd already budgeted, that we would, you would authorize us, the council would authorize Dan and myself, to amend the JPA to remove the truck fees from our current contract. That's something that has to be done by the board members with the approval of their council. So we would ask for, one, that you give us the authority to amend the contract, remove the truck fees. Two, that our council would agree to shorten the length of the dissolution from the contracted two years to one year. Right now, they have voted in Ramsey in December to dissolve the JPA, it starts a two-year cycle. We're saying, we'll give you the $8,000 rather than $82,000, but we'll let you out in one year. If you're asking for the $82,000, then we're not letting you out early. We would increase our contribution to the Relief Association Pension Account. Currently, it's at $406 per firefighter, we would increase that to $419, which would increase our total for the year by about $180. Our total would be, right now, we're required to pay $3,400, I think it is, $3,100, we're paying $6,185. So to increase our contribution to the going rate, this is what Ramsey is paying for firefighters, so we would match what they're paying. And we would then, at the fireboard meeting, offer to take on some of the administrative cost to help alleviate the cost burden that they feel in Ramsey. Right now, they're saying that they need the $82,000 because it's costing them that administrative fees. So, talking with our attorney and with Lori, we would volunteer to take on some of those costs, should they be willing to share them, and therefore lower their burden. So if the council approves that, then myself and Councilmember Bryan would present this information to City of Ramsey at our fireboard meeting next Tuesday. So is there any discussion before we vote on that, to make sure it's understood?
Yes.
Councilmember Blake?
Mr. Mayor, how in the world do they have $82,000 they want from us and we're offering them 8? I mean...
That's how we got here, you know, it was 8,000 in September, and it went to 40,000, then 160,000, and back to 82,000.
So that's outlined in the spreadsheet?
That spreadsheet tells you how they came up with those numbers. Basically, they took this 160,000 plus that they were asking for previously and took out the 2.3% multiplier.
2.3, not 2.3%.
Uh, 2.3 multiplier, sorry. So they basically said, we'll just give you straight cost.
Which didn't apply to everything.
Right. Look at your spreadsheet, you'll see that only things with asterisks have the 2.3 multiplier.
Okay, so, just let me get this straight in my head, because it's so confusing. We were giving them 8,000 last year, and they went up to 82 this year?
That is their request. Actually, they went up to 165.
Okay, but I mean, we're adding up to 82, but we were giving them 8,000 last year. So why, what happened, that they get so, I mean, that's really a huge jump.
Yeah, it's 2,000%.
I know, so why?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
If I may. The thing we have to remember is when the JPA was put together many years ago, that was what was negotiated, was that the fees.
It was negotiated as a fixed fee, it's never, it wasn't a living fee, thinking that this wouldn't go on for decades.
When, at the fireboard meetings, we were talking and discussing about costs, the City of Ramsey actually went back and looked at their actual numbers and factored in cost of their IT people, cost of their HR employees. And then that's what they used to, that came up with the spreadsheet. And it's in their determination that the actual costs was that $160,000.
Mr. Mayor? To answer your question is, how they came up with that $160,000 was based on call percentage. So they took the amount of calls between the City of Ramsey and the City of Nowland, and it figured... And figured out how much call percentage in Nowland was taking up their administrative staff. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that number was about seventeen percent. So they then took that seventeen percent, multiplied that by certain individual salaries. So now, Nowland would be paying those administrative costs for that seventeen percent of those individual salaries. Which then totals roughly eighty-some thousand dollars. And then Ramsey so then chose to add a multiplier to that number of two-point-three, which then came up to a hundred and sixty plus thousand dollars.
And that's for part of it, that's not all of it that way.
Correct.
Part of it is based on the number of firefighters. So that's why it came out to a, putting it all together in a spreadsheet.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, so we're saying here, I just wanna make sure I understand what we're doing here. We're saying here that we're going to pay, that our firefighters, the amount that they were getting retirement, Relief Association contributions. We'll start paying them that when they leave Ramsey.
No.
No?
No, this is, this is a, a fee we pay every year.
So we've already paid this?
We've been paying this.
Okay, this is what they don't get.
It's just, it's just going up. They had, they had a, a cost of living increase, and that cost of living increase, uh, raised the, the contribution rate. So it was last year, per firefighter, whether you were out of station three, one or two. You were, they were paying, each city was paying four hundred and nine dollars. This year, it's gone up to four hundred and sixteen.
Four hundred and nineteen, yeah.
Nineteen.
And so now you're saying that you're gonna go back and present to them, they'll give them the eight thousand, and if they don't agree to that. We'll, we wanna get out of this agreement with them within a year, is that correct?
We're saying that.
Is that what you're saying?
We're saying that they would like to be out sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And so we're offering them, we'll allow you a one-year exit instead of a two-year.
If you take the eight. And what if they say, no, we won't take the eight?
Then we have. We're at loggerheads. We have a two-two vote.
We're negotiating.
Okay. All right, that's, I just needed to understand this, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Uh huh.
And, come, or, the train group, you may be able to answer this better too, because it's probably more of a legal issue than anything else, but. It's my understanding that the way the current JPA is written, it's written where as soon as Ramsey initiated that they wanted out of the agreement, a two-year clock starts. So technically, Nowland has two years. And according to that agreement, at the time, we were still willing to pay sixty, six thousand some dollars, but we had talked about increasing it to eighty-fourty-eight. I guess my question then is, if the contract is written where we can take eight thousand dollars for up to two years, why would we shorten it sooner?
To entice them to be more cooperative, rather than challenging it. It's, it's an advantage for them, they'd like to get out sooner. And, and quite frankly, um, it makes sense for us to get off the dime and do something quickly, rather than drag this out two years. But if, if it can be agreed, that the contracted amount, sixty-four hundred dollars is all we'd have to pay. I guess the question is, what kind of relationship would we have if they have to do that for two years when they think it should be twenty-four times that, twenty-four hundred times that, so. So I think it's, it's, it's best for all, and it, it requires that we get our stuff together and make a decision to do something. But it also would, would try to alleviate any challenge to it. They have an advantage by getting out a year early. Uh, we have an advantage by not paying eighty-two or say, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
About per the current contract, we would have to anyways, correct?
Depends on who interprets that contract. There's a, there's a fifth vote looming out there somewhere or something.
And, Mr.?
So there, there's some unknowns. There, there's interpretation, it's, it's a, uh. There are some, some things that aren't clear in the wording of that contract.
We believe it is clear.
We believe it is, they believe differently.
In the contract, it has that in event that we disagree on what's necessary to, in order to provide adequate emergency fire and rescue services under the agreement. That then, if, since it's a two-two vote on the, there's a deadline, then they can go out and seek a, a, a mutual party to vote on that. And there's an order on here, President of the Anoka County Fire Protection Council, and the chair, and so forth, goes down the list. We believe, they're taking the position that it's a, it's a deadlock vote, therefore, provision of payment of the fighter administrative cost. That's necessary for adequate emergency service personnel, and therefore, this is a vote that they're going to try to recruit somebody on to take that time. Our position is, no, that contract is very clear.
At, at the last fireboard meeting, we made it, we made it clear, they have an opinion, we made it clear, we have an opinion. So, if we don't have to take that discussion to court, we're better off giving them one year less and paying a lesser amount. If we have to take that to court, we're wasting everybody's money.
Yeah.
But that, that is something that, right now, we have a disagreement on the interpretation of that current JPA. What we're doing is, is trying to proceed here with, if we can take some of the sticking points out of it, the truck fees and, and some of these other things out of there, if we can amend it with the council's approval. We can get through and focus on where we wanna go next. They, they've made it clear, um, should we, you know, in the letter that we got from them, they said they have authorized their fireboard to proceed, um. To enter into negotiations, develop a new agreement for shared fire services. So this is, we've only recently heard that they would be interested in a new JPA. When we asked them, would that include numbers like we're seeing as a contractor, they said yes, it would be a hundred and sixty plus. So, we are going to investigate how serious they are in that, and, uh, and thus, the authorization that we'd be looking for next, to investigate other options. But the reason for the one year out was to try and alleviate the potential for contracted, uh, additional cost. So, the first motion I'm gonna ask for here is that. The council authorizes the fireboard members, Dan and myself, to amend the current JPA contract to remove the truck fees. Right now, when Ramsey's trucks come to Nowland, they pay us. Or we pay them. When our trucks go to Ramsey, they pay us. Uh, in a given year, we get more of our trucks going down to Ramsey, they pay us. This year, it's way over the other way. They've been up here a lot. And so we would owe them more money. So in twenty twenty, we would amend that to not have that truck fee, just be like mutual aid. There wouldn't be an additional fee. So, but, you have to approve that, Dan and I would make that recommendation. So my first motion is, you approve authorizing Dan and myself to, um, amend the JPA contract with their approval to remove the truck fees. Move that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So you ask, okay, under these talking points, so, are we gonna do a motion on each individual thing?
Wake them up all as one if you like.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay, so, and I will amend that motion to include removal of the truck fees from the contract. Uh, shorten the length of dissolution on the contract from two years down to one year, pending their acceptance of our authorized payment of eight thousand forty-eight dollars. Uh, we would agree to increase the Relief Association contribution from four oh six to four nineteen per firefighter for twenty twenty. And we would make the offer to take on some of the administrative cost to help alleviate the cost burden to City of Ramsey. So I make a motion to approve these items, and to be able to present them to the City of Ramsey at our fireboard next week.
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
So part of, the other couple are things. Part of the removal of the truck fees is, they have a lot of time that they spent figuring that out every, every month. So part of.
Part of it's the cost, part of it's the administrative hassle of doing that.
The administrative cost of having their Ram, City of Ramsey staff figuring out what these actual truck fees are. Um, the other comment to note is, they have already said, um, the City of Ramsey has said, we would like eighty thousand dollars for twenty twenty. And if this did go into a two-year agreement for twenty twenty-one, it's going to be the hundred and sixty.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right.
Mr. Mayor, can you back here as part of that motion, indicating, uh, the four oh six per firefighter to four nineteen per firefighter?
Yes.
Yeah, he did, yeah.
All right, the second motion, um, has fireboard members. When we first heard that Ramsey was considering dissolution of this, and we had Lori ask, uh, neighboring communities if they would be interested in a potential JPA, joint powers agreement with us for fire services. And we got a quick response from St. Francis, Oak Grove, and Elk River, that they would. At the time, Ramsey didn't indicate that they would. They have subsequently said they would be interested in doing this at a high rate. Hundred and sixty plus. So I'm gonna make a motion here that as fireboard members, myself and Councilmember Brian, would follow up, again with Lori's help here. To see if these cities really are interested and capable of doing that. We're not making any arrangements, we're simply saying, are you interested? Are you serious about it? And what would that look like? So we would be coming back later, what, what those conditions might be. But first of all, we wanna know if they're truly serious. And so we would be investigating that, so we can get moving. And so we are asking for authorization to speak on behalf of the city, with those four cities, to see about the seriousness of this and what that might look like. All right, so I will move authority accordingly.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
And, so including that, it's just, it, I mean, we, 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 we will be using our, the resources that we have at our disposal. You know, continuing to work with Lori, we've, um, had conversations with, with our attorney on, on getting their recommendations, so that's, you know, part of it, where it's not just, we're just gonna, hey, how are you doing? So.
No, we, we would be working with, with staff, uh, there will be charges accordingly, uh, on our bills. Uh, we'll also be working with the League of Minnesota Cities on, uh, model joint power agreements. We'd be looking at, um, cities that have JPAs in place that are successful, to look at what model we might have, so that if there is discussion, there's, there's actual, um, what does this look like? So we don't get into a situation saying, yeah, well, we'll charge the same thing Ramsey was, and, and if it's, if they're not serious, we wanna know that. Before we get any further down the road. But it would, it was whatever it takes to find out if they're serious, and set that up accordingly, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I? And I sent an email, or had an email sent out too. I guess from our, from the firefighter perspective, I know it's disrespect to the mayor and Councilman Brian, but. We believe that obviously, adding a, a third person to that, somebody who is a member of the department or station, could greatly help the city from that aspect. Because, obviously, with operational side of things, we know that side much better than you guys, so. We don't necessarily know, are the right questions being answered, or are questions being answered, or what you should be hearing or shouldn't be hearing?
And, and we, we took into account your, your email that was distributed, and, and for the time being, one, the firefighters are all employees of Ramsey. And it was pointed out to us when we suggested a meeting with the firefighters to let them know our intentions, where we're at, we were planning a meeting for this week. And we were advised, I won't say the, I won't say the right words here. Okay, it came back as a, a recommendation, that we not have discussion with any firefighters until after our board meeting next week. Uh, we are not entering an agreement at this point, we are simply looking at the, at the seriousness of this, so we aren't negotiating with four people that aren't really interested. So, we're not at that point. Uh, we would like to sit down with the firefighters and describe what we're doing specifically, but it's been recommended that we don't, by the chief. Um, you are employees of Ramsey at this point, and so we've been asked to respect that. And after we have come to formal arrangements next week at the fireboard meeting, that may change. But at this point, um, it's something that as a city, we're gonna investigate, but we're not making any arrangements yet. We're simply, um, we are, we are working with three agencies in the state. The pension, uh, the people who write the legislation for the Relief Association, the pension people, and the auditor. And, uh, in working with them, um, we have to come up with a decision fairly quickly, because a law has to be written, and it has to be introduced. So we'll be working with our state senator and our, our state representative, uh, to introduce bills. But we have to make some decisions here fairly quickly, and the firefighters will know before we do that. But at this point, we're dealing with another city's employees, and we've been asked to, uh, not hold meetings yet. So we will be as forthright as we can, once we get through next week's fireboard meeting and know more what, what we can do. I will say that the chief has also been in touch with these state legislators, legislative agencies. So working cooperatively at this point, though, he's making phone calls, we're making phone calls. We're hoping to get all three agencies on a, on a conference call with our staff, and hopefully, after the fireboard meeting with Ramsey's staff, so that we are coordinated in our efforts. But we do have, uh, we do have to make sure we're abiding by bylaws of the Relief Association, by the joint powers agreement, and by state legislation, so. We are taking it seriously, but we are not moving ahead at this point to the point where firefighters can effectively be involved. We will bring firefighters in if we're ready with them. We, we understand that how this has to work is, is we're not, we're not versed in it. We'll be bringing in experts, which will be in my next motion here. But we're gonna be as inclusive as we can at the appropriate time. All right, so did we vote on that one? Uh, so we have a, a motion and a second, to authorize us to proceed, along with staff, uh, in the discussions with four neighboring cities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, and the final motion is to, um, allow Councilmember Brian and I to contact independent contractors. In order to discuss the option of, of the City of Nowland starting its own fire department. Again, to investigate what we need to know, to ask the right questions. We're not proceeding with any, anything along that lines, it's to bring information back to the council, saying, here's what we know realistically about joint power agreements. Here's what we know regarding cost of our own. And then move a discussion forward, so we can talk to state legislature about what we need to do to proceed. Whichever way we go, the state needs to know, because the pension will need special legislation, we'll have to have a law passed. And we'll have to do that, because the, uh, session is starting in February, so we wanna get that sooner rather than later. So again, looking at, uh, through the League of Minnesota Cities or other independent contractors, that can advise us, here's things you should be looking for. So we can gather data to bring back to the council. Hopefully, by that time, we are able to talk to firefighters as well. So I make a motion that we be authorized to, uh, engage independent contractors. Identify what their costs might be to discuss things with us, including people referred to by the League of Minnesota Cities, which may or may not cost us money. But that we be able to get that information together and bring it back to council.
Second, then?
So I have a motion and a second, authorizing us to proceed on, uh, looking for help on identifying costs associated with our own department. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
And along with that, I mean, there are potentially opportunities for grants that, to do stuff like this.
Correct.
To set up fire departments and. To set up fire departments, and so yes, there may be costs, but we may be able to recoup some of those costs as well.
Wonderful.
And it was mentioned, you know, yeah, we'll just leave it at that.
Great.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
If we were going to be spending $160,000, I'd rather it go toward the City of Now Then.
We agree. If we're spending $80,000, I'd rather go to City of Now Then.
I agree.
Contractually, we are obligated to 6,400. We voluntarily chose to raise that to 8,000 last year, but if it's contractual, right now, it's 6,400. So we would like to be able to retain that for our own solution here. Any other discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bob, Lori, anything we missed? So at this point, we'll be gathering information. We'll be discussing it. Like I said, when we do engage Bob on this, he will be billing us, so we'll see that on his bills. One of the reasons that Dan and I are doing the legwork on this is to minimize the cost for Bob and minimize the extra burden on Lori as best we can.
All right.
And as I say, we, respect to the firefighters, we did propose a meeting this week, and we've been asked to hold off. We're not insensitive, we're just kind of handcuffed right now.
Yeah, obviously with the law that has to be passed, we'd have to start our own relief association at that moment.
Yeah, yeah, there has to be, and that's why there will be a three-way conference call with three members of the legislative, the auditor's office, the legislative pension commission, and one other group. We will need to make sure that we've crossed all our Ts, dotted all our Is, and we know what getting out means and what getting started anew means, because that all has to be in the law. But we are talking to the right people.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
You can.
Is there a possibility that we are going to end up paying more than $160,000 to run our own fire department?
I would, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't think so, but we don't know yet. And again, remember, that's just the administrative cost. We already pay all of our own operation costs. We already own our equipment. We own our building. We already pay for those things. We pay for the firefighters when they go out. We pay Ramsey for that. We pay workers' comp. So a lot of the cost, we have a spreadsheet we've started to look at, at cost that we already are paying, so what, a model from other cities that have all the costs for running a fire department. We have that model in place, so we can plug our numbers into it. So a lot of these costs, we're already paying. What we're debating over here is the administrative cost that went from 6,400 to potentially 82,000. That's just administrative. All the other costs, we're already paying. And since you bring that up, I was looking at the bill from Ramsey, and I see bills on here on things that was decided we would pay extra on. So in the spreadsheet, they said, oh, by the way, these are administrative costs, these are fixed costs, you're just going to start billing for these. But according to JPA, we were never billed for these before. Should we challenge the payment on that? Because all of a sudden, we've got, we're getting charged for all the tablets, we're getting charged for laptops, for Kona and Weiss, we're getting finance charges, so there's a bunch of charges on this, as late as bill, that are in addition to what we agreed to on the JPA, just because they announced this fall, you're going to have to start paying those now too. Now that we've identified administrative cost, you need to pay these hard costs that we're going to bill you separately. We never agreed to a separate billing.
Mayor and councilman, and Bob, I hope you can weigh in on this. What I'm understanding now, the invoices that are coming in, I send to the chief and ask him, is this something that we are, that is our property, that the City of Now Then will own, and he's only sending us bills for things that we will have our own. They won't go back to Ramsey. So I don't know if Ramsey...
Well, I've got a Matt Kona laptop at $40 and a Chris Weiss laptop at $40. Those aren't ours.
No, they're not. And Mr. Mayor.
And I've got one, two, does everybody have a tablet? I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 tablets.
Each truck has its own tablet.
Okay, well, I'm getting billed for 11 tablets at $35 apiece.
We have two of Ramsey's. Yeah, because the tanker doesn't have one, so Rescue 31 and Engine 31 have one.
Okay. I'm also getting charged engineering fees, engineering interns, Aaron Matson, intern two, engineering hotspot, Logan Chek, and Bruce Wespe. I'm getting charged finance, Calvin Kubit and Jason Frederickson.
I can ask about those. Those invoices didn't hit the city office. We didn't pay them individually, so if they're on the Ramsey invoice, I can ask why we would be charged for those.
Yeah, because we're getting charged for Kurt Ulrich and Megan Thorstedt, too.
Mr. Mayor.
So anyway, this is attached to the Ramsey invoice.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raymow.
I believe the last two months, we've received this piece. I remember in my notes of him, maybe the last two months, we've received that piece with the tablets and such. But back to what you said earlier, if that wasn't part of the JPA, you know, Mr. Rupi has to tell us whether or not they can start adding extra stuff in there.
If that falls within the administrative portion of this, then the answer is no. And they have, as you mentioned, they've never historically done that. This agreement has been enforced in some version for over a decade. And so now, all of a sudden, immediately, they raised the right at one time to 165,000. Then at the last meeting, they lowered it to 80,000. Now they're trying to charge for a bunch of other things, and again, hopefully we can work these things out. If we can't, well then, we have to do what we have to do.
And it might be that they're indicating this is what it would be, you know, you'd have to see if it's part of the bill or not. But I just noticed this when I pulled my packet out, that all of a sudden, there's all these names showing up with charges on things that I know we don't have that many tablets.
I'll do clarification on that.
I haven't seen Kurt on a truck yet.
Well, if you do look at the cost breakdown, that has it at 89.18, which is the front cost on your invoice. But that, and that has in there the monthly Verizon cellular for tablets, $105.
Yeah, which is three.
Yeah.
Which sounds like there should be two.
Right, yeah. So we'll just, we'll let you straighten that out, but I would hold the check until we get that figured out. And next Tuesday at 7:00, Station Two. Should be exciting. Ramsey is having this discussion tonight at their council meeting, so. Here's this one on the front. Now Then portion of external education, a line of health, $1,400. Now Then portion is 960. So again, that's additional.
That was in training.
You know, it's a line of health.
Line of health is all the medical training.
Okay. Yeah, there was a $1,440 bill. They divided it by three, and they multiplied it by two, and so that's Now Then's portion. Again, it's something that we haven't seen before, and...
Yeah, so that's three Now Then firefighters, so it's...
Times two.
Times two, yeah.
On their invoice, they only have two Now Then firefighters listed, Cody House and Lou Memela.
Oh, that could be EMR, EMR.
EMR, says EMR.
Okay, that's the training for R2.
Which, again, is one of the things we identified, that wow, we should be paying for that ourselves, but we haven't agreed to that yet. So we do have a contract, and it was arbitrarily decided we're going to start paying some hard costs. We want to be as cooperative as possible because we're going to be good neighbors going out of this, but we also don't want to give away money that we need for our own uses here, so. All right, and if there's anything else on the fire department? Again, we have a meeting next week, and more a week from today, probably about this time. All right, last item on the council meeting is meeting day discussion. Last fall, again, as I referenced earlier, we had some talk of a workshop. We're going to talk about meetings, all committee and commission meetings, our council meetings, which day of the month we want to meet. There was some discussion, it might be more beneficial to the staff to meet the third week, but we never actually came up with that decision. We now have people that have set their schedules based on the original date of the second week and the potential date of the third week. And so at this point, we have not, I don't believe we have all the facts that we started talking about last fall as to what would benefit staff as far as second week, third week, what bills might be affected, what that means to other committee meetings and things. So I don't know that we can go ahead without that workshop, without a discussion of the consequences of moving dates around. I think we need to keep it at the second at this point until we come to an agreement. Unfortunately, for at least one month, that will affect one of our council members. But the second month, we determined it wouldn't, be April.
Yep, I'm going to be able to do that one.
Okay, so at this point, it looks like because of plans that have been set in play, we should keep it at the second, unless anybody has anything else, and then at our workshop, discuss with staff what makes most sense going forward, and then publicize that. Should we change it, publicize that so the residents know.
Great.
But at this point, since the residents are expecting it, we don't have a understanding of the consequences of changing it, we'll keep it at the second until our workshop may determine otherwise. Is that in agreement, is council agreement?
Keeping it the second.
Keep it on the second.
Until we talk about it at the workshop, sure.
Yep. All right, so sorry about February, but we'll keep it on the second.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
All right.
I second.
We are adjourned. And Lori, you'll let us know about Pam?
Yes.